What it is? It's something. I did too. Yeah. Yeah. Think it's something else, though.
I think it's initials.
Yeah. Okay. Um, it is. What time it is? Okay, that is six thirty and I am going to call the May thirteenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Charter Township of Meridian Planning Commission Regular Meeting to Order. Um, starting with the roll call. Uh, Commissioner Snyder.
President.
Commissioner Brooks.
President.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Blumer.
Yes.
Commissioner McCourtis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Scales.
Present.
And Commissioner Shrewsbury, I'm here as well. Okay, great. Um, now we come to the part of our meeting where we have public remarks. Um, if anybody from the public would like to come speak right now, you may. We do have, um, three public hearings on the agenda, so if you're coming to speak about one of the topics that's up for a public hearing, you can speak then, but this is, uh, time to speak on public comment for anything that's on the agenda that we would like to talk about. If anyone would like to speak for public comment on any of the public hearings, there should be a green sheet for them to fill out.
I don't have a green sheet for them, but, um.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as we get their name and address.
Okay. We do not have a green sheet, but we'll, we'll make sure that we cover. Did you have a question?
Is it possible to enlarge the challenge?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know if anyone could see that.
Yeah, that is pretty tiny, thank you. We have a little closer here, so.
Is that better?
We really don't want you to see it.
That's not true. We do want you to see it. It is also available, if you have a device at home, a device, you can look it up on the Meridian Township. Um, if you look into the government tab, um, you can find the full meeting packet of everything that we're looking at, so if you want to go home and look at anything or in the future, it's there as well. Um, seeing nobody for this session of public remarks, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm moved to approve the agenda.
Moved by Commissioner Scales, seconded by Commissioner Blumer. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and next we are to item five, approval of minutes of the April twenty second, twenty twenty four Regular Meeting of the Planning Commission. Motion to approve. Motion to approve by Commissioner Snyder.
Say.
By Commissioner McCourtis. Um, any discussion?
I just have one comment.
Please.
Uh, is there any way, and maybe this is, I saw my, this is a question. Is there any best practice around adding the responses to questions from the applicant in that? In the meeting minutes?
I'm sorry, what do you, can you rephrase?
So like, we had a long conversation, um, last meeting about the Village of Okemos Project, and so there were several, there was a lot of different comments from commissioners. And so what I'm curious is, is there any need or reason that we would also add the, the developers' comments and response in that document?
If the commission fee, so the level of detail above the necessary required stuff.
Right.
Is up to the planning commission. I've run into this a couple times. Um, you can always ask for more, conversely, ask for a little bit more condensed information, if that's what you're looking for, a little bit more of a summarization, that's certainly possible.
Okay.
If I'm understanding your, your question.
Yeah, that's right. So I, I'm just curious what other people think.
Now, this is not, this is not intended to be a dictation. It's a, they're minutes.
Right.
And I've had that conversation with prior planning commissions, too.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm not looking for a dictation. I just think because of the, I was just thinking about this as I was reading through the notes, and I was thinking about the purpose of that meeting as being a conversation with the developer, that it may be appropriate to have some summarization of their responses. Um, but I'm posing that to the rest of the commission, just to see what other people think, if that's a worthwhile use of energy or not.
And I'm not sure, and this is me, I'm not sure that that's, if you're talking about this specific set of minutes and wanting more in this, otherwise I think it's sort of a more, it's a broader question that I think we should talk about.
Correct.
Um, and, and wouldn't want to necessarily solve it here, but, but I think it's worth conversation, but, so if it's a specific request to add something to these minutes, um, I, I will say, and I let others who have commented, if they want to make it to the, I'm, I'm sometimes uncomfortable asking staff to do too much paraphrasing of someone else's opinion. Um, I feel like the documentation that's provided, it's, it's a fine line and it's hard, but I, I think the more you include that detail, the more likely you are to prescribe intent or motive to someone else that might not be correct because you're paraphrasing. So, in, in looking to add that kind of information, particularly because our meetings are recorded, so someone who wanted to see the record could go back and look at the video recording. I've done that once or twice when I wasn't sure, but, but that's specific to this one. But I think it's worth a, a more detailed conversation at some other point in time, too.
I mean, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It, it seems like even just tonight, when we get to item thirteen, it could come back up and we could have more discussion about it, just generally.
That would be a great idea, if that's okay. Anyone else have?
I was gonna seg- segue right into that, based on what I was reading in here on page two. I'm not sure this is accurately attributed to Mr. Heltser, where he says, second to the last paragraph, he says, it says, he says, that he clarified that widening Okemos Road creates the need to bury the power lines. If you just stop right there, those two are not congruent. It's not the widening.
No.
Of the road.
It's, it's not. That might have been what he said, but it's not the widening of the road. It's the current, it's the construction of the building that close to the.
Okay.
Right away, that height.
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the height of the lines, but.
That, that might be what he said, but that's not an act, it might not, it might not be an accurate statement.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Point, point proven with the direct summarization. I.
I'd be happy to bring this back, like, like Commissioner Snyder suggested, but if anyone has any specific, I guess, we have a, we could move this forward.
Commissioner McConnell?
So one specific one is the final paragraph of section nine A. Again, the Okemos Concept Plan, we're addressing the, um, the challenge to reseeding or planting o- on the site. It can't be, the pollution can only be contained. And I, I think he specified that if you were going to vegetate, it would have to be in the areas along the perimeter. And I thought that was an important detail that could be captured, because if that's a direction that somebody wants to go, then that's useful to know about.
Okay.
Commissioner Scales?
That containment, he's sitting up there telling us that sitting on that site is, is tylenine, xylene, uh, benzene, and perchloroethylene are all sitting on that site contained there. The, the, the B-taxes are from gas stations, and the perchloroethylene would be from a dry cleaner. Those are the chemicals that those, those industries produce. And I'm not sure, cannot be taken out. I'm of the belief that they may have chosen the easiest route to deal with the problem, and that is to contain it.
So we hope to amend the minutes to include all those chemicals?
We're, we're kind of getting off the, um, the privilege of the minute. Commissioner Brooks, did you have anything specifically that you wanted to see in or out of what's here now, just so that we don't miss anything?
No, I retract my. It's okay.
Thank you. All right, well, that part of the discussion to be continued. Does anyone else have anything else specific to, um, besides the slight change that Commissioner McConnell suggested, any other changes to the minutes from the meeting? Okay, all in favor of approval with that slight amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Minutes are approved with the slight change. Um, communications, we have one that was in our packet, and it looks like a couple more here, do you want to?
Yes, you have one in your packet regarding SUP two four zero zero eight, and then you have three that were, that came in over the weekend that we printed out and provided to you. You're all three regarding SUP number two four zero zero nine.
Folks haven't had a chance to read over those, please do. And then I think that moves us to our public hearings, item number seven A, Special Use Permit Number Two Four Zero Zero Seven. And now I can't read again. Liliac.
I'm sorry.
That's, no, 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 keep going down, go down. And thank you so much for putting this in the, um, in the packet, that was really helpful.
So very, very quickly, since we have an audience, uh, planning commission had asked this, that document like this be prepared so that everyone can be on the same page, so to speak, on what we're, what's going to happen tonight. I'm Brian Sharkey, I'm the principal planner, I'm going to give a brief summary of each request as it comes up. Applicant, assuming they're here, is going to have an opportunity to come up and, and answer questions from the planning commission as well. At that point, uh, public comment on each public hearing will open up. Each person gets three minutes. Uh, they'll, they're nice about, you know, if you're finishing a sentence, finish your sentence, but, you know, that, that is a time limit. Uh, planning commission discusses, and then what you're going to see tonight is an informal poll. By bylaw, the planning commission is not permitted to actually make a decision on any of these, of, of the public hearings tonight. They will come back at their next meeting and take all three of these issues back up. Uh, what we're specifically discussing tonight are special use permits, and that's this last point here, and I will proceed with the first case.
And just for the record, I'm sorry, I didn't say this when we opened this public hearing, it was at six forty.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is special use permit number two four zero zero seven, Liliac LLC, to redevelop an existing building into a four-unit residential building. You saw this, uh, earlier this year, late last year, when the same applicant applied for rezoning of that property. It had currently housed, uh, four office suites, I think there was a dental office in there previously. It's been vacant for some time. Uh, your recommendation was to rezone it to RC, I believe, and the township board rezoned it to RN, which is in congruence with the surrounding properties on the three, on the west, north, and east. The property to the south is zone C two. So in the RN district, a multifamily development such as this is allowed under a special use permit process, that's what the applicant has applied for today. I'll be, I'll just get right to it. Looking at what we have here, the biggest thing that we're going to run into is the pavement and road access. Uh, the applicant has been talking to the Inglewood County Road Department about this. Here we go. I do need to come out a little bit and see here. This is the concept plan that the applicant has provided with this application. I will note that there is pavement out there already, it's, the pavement's in rough condition. One of our conditions of approval is that before they get site plan approval, he's going to have to repave and basically resurface that pavement, that pavement. In the process, the lot, the, the parking spaces are going to get restriped. By ordinance, the parking spaces are going to have to be ten, ten feet wide, um, with, with extra for the, for a handicap spot. Uh, at the moment, it appears that there's room for that. So if the pavement doesn't have to be extended to accommodate the ten required parking spots, then the Inglewood County Road Department is the only approving agency outside of the township. If the pavement goes on, the Inglewood County Road Department, or Drain Commission's office is going to become involved with site plan approval as well. Um, the, uh, road department, I'm not prepared to, to talk about what they're talking, what their, what their conversation is, it, because it's not in writing or anything, there's just, I, I just, I just know that the applicant has been talking about this project with the Inglewood County Road Department already. It's, other than that, it, people are seeing this as a cleanup of the site, a reutilization of an existing property. We have, we have not identified any other issues with this reason, with this SUP, excuse me.
Thank you. Any questions for staff, Commissioner Scales?
Well, I think it's.
Oh, we hear from the applicant first, and is the applicant here?
Um.
And would you like to speak to the project?
I guess the public.
Oh, the public first?
No, root, no, root, uh, I honestly, I just spoke, I spoke to, um, the applicant last week. I don't see him here now. Um, I apologize for this, he gave indication he would be here.
Is there anyone?
Yeah, yeah, at this point, yes.
Okay, anyone from the public would like to speak to this special use permit? Seeing no one, I will entertain staff questions.
Thank you.
Any commission questions? Commissioner Scales?
Thank you. Acting Director Sharkey, my question is, do you have the dimensions of that parking lot? And do you believe that they have room to put the appropriate amount of handicapper spaces in there?
Staff has gone out there and done rough measurements of it, and it appears that it could fit. I haven't seen an engineered drawing, if that's what you're asking.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any question? Commissioner Brooks?
Uh, I have two questions. Uh, one is, uh, is there, so is this, there any connection between this project and the Village of Namoka rezoning?
No.
Project that we did, these are just like.
There, it, it's just you could hit a golf ball from one to the other. Actually, that would be a pretty good poke, but, no, they're in the same, they're, they're in the same Pica, the same Haslip area.
Yeah. Um, okay, so then my second question is, the, um, so the, the parking ordinance changes that we're looking at, I, I know this is somewhat, somewhat related, so, but would, if we changed those ordinances, would that have an effect on a project like this?
Not, no, I don't think so.
No.
This, the, so the requirements, just so everyone's clear, the requirements, it's four residential units. Uh, under ordinance, each unit has to have two parking spots, and then you have to have a twenty-five percent overflow, so twenty-five percent of eight is two, so eight plus two is ten spots. That's where we're getting the ten, the ten from.
And so when we change the or, or assuming that we do change the ordinance, I don't want to.
I'm not prepared to talk about.
There's no.
Changes to something that has not been publicly presented, still behind doors.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, it's okay, it's okay. Um, to answer your question very broadly, I do not believe that this is going to significantly change.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blumer, and then Snyder?
It appears to me that this is entirely consistent with the properties around it, is that correct? I mean, it's a pre-existing building, they've made no major changes to the exterior of the building.
They are not touching the exterior of the building.
All they're doing.
Cosmetic stuff, but.
They're repurposing a building that's been there for fifty or sixty years.
Correct.
And the parking lot basically is just being rebuilt, it's not being significantly altered from its existing size.
Correct.
So there really is no real conflict that we have to deal with here.
Not aside from whatever is going to shake out from road and traffic issues.
Thank you.
Commissioner Snyder?
Uh, I think this might kind of line up with, um, Commissioner Blumer's thought process. As I was looking through the packet for tonight, um, you know, it, our job is to determine whether to redevelop this existing, existing building into a four-unit residential building, whether or not that should be done. I remember this applicant coming through and talking about this project and it being a, a four-unit, um, you know, multifamily residential building, and my question is, is this something that we can move to approve without a representative here? Because.
You're not making.
It's supposed to go through site plan approval.
You're not making a motion tonight, anyway.
Okay.
I would, I would say.
Oh, right.
No, you shouldn't, but I'll tell the applicant to be at your next meeting.
Right, sorry. I got way ahead of myself.
No, it's okay, it's okay. I was hoping that would come up. I don't think there's any problem having the hearing, giving people opportunity to speak, this was with the scheduled, the scheduled hearing. You've, that, that's fine. If you were going to make a motion tonight, I would recommend against that until you had a chance to talk to the applicant.
Does anyone else have any other questions for staff or thoughts? Um, my only question is, if we recommend and the board approves, uh, a special use permit, oh, this is us, this is on us, okay.
This is, this special use permit is, is yet to be allowed.
So if we approve it, and then subsequently they aren't able to get the site plan review and the Drain Commission things worked out, what happens? Does that special use permit expire, or?
The special, the special use permit has a twenty-four month window.
Okay.
And they're eligible to come in and get one twelve-month extension.
Okay, thank you for reminding us of that.
Sure.
Cool. If there's no other discussion, do we want to do a straw poll on support for this, or do you want to, if, if folks are not feeling comfortable, we can, it was like to give staff direction if we think we're likely to approve? Straw poll, those who would be considering approval of this next month, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody who has concerns or questions that you'd like me to answer? Thank you.
We will return with a recommend, or resolution of approval at your next meeting.
That's great, thank you. So close this public hearing at six fifty, and move on to public hearing, um, seven B for the special use permit number two four zero zero eight, Radmore Montessori at twenty-seven forty-five Mount Hope.
Okay. This is a request to amend an existing special use permit to expand the parking lot, to add twelve spaces at the existing facility known as the Radmore, uh, Montessori Radmore School. Uh, this has had several approvals over the years, uh, this is, and this is, we made the interpretation that even though it's not, not changing the use, they're not expanding the building, uh, they, they did need to come and talk to you guys and get SUP approval before we could approve a site plan for expanded parking. There's not a lot to say on this, it is an expansion of the impervious area, so the Drain Commissioner's Office will get involved in site plan review. It, there are wetlands on the site, a wetland delineation was done, this has, the, the expansion of this parking does not impact the existing wetlands, so that isn't a concern, we did look at that. Uh, it's not a floodplain concern, it's, but, you know, they, they need the additional parking space, um, without necess, without having to increase their building, so in one respect, this, you know, it's a, it's going well. I really don't have a lot to say, and I can try to answer any questions you have.
Yes, anyone have questions?
Pretty straightforward application.
Can you, can you, thank you, can you put a picture up on the screen?
Absolutely. Uh, this one, I do have a full size of the plan, the plan they submitted. If, if you guys want me to pass this around, I can show this to anybody who wants to see it, um.
I just wanted to look.
Okay, okay.
I'm not an op.
We've gone to digital submittal on so much stuff, but they, they did provide that to us.
Okay.
I think here's a, back out so you can see the whole site. So here, let's see, I got my bearings, I'm sorry. This, this is your entrance, u- up here to the north, you come this way, and then this is the additional parking that they're talking about right here, total of twelve spots.
Okay.
And down below.
Because I was just over there, brightly looking at this, and I was trying to ascertain there's a body of water to the east. Is that the wetland, or is that a creek running through there?
You know what? It's a swamp.
It is a swamp, I.
I'm not going to try to play.
It's like my backyard, basically.
Um, yes. Just, I don't know if that answers your question or not, this is the site that we're talking about.
Right.
This is the parking lot, and it's quite vegetated. I can show you what it looks like on our parcel viewer.
Right now it's a deer habitat.
And the reason I'm, I'm asking, uh, and maybe you can just answer this question, and we won't have to go this deep in the weeds. When you said there's a wetland there, is it a state-regulated wetland or a township-regulated wetland?
Um. Okay, there you go, and that wetland is, yeah, that would be a township-regulated wetland. It's six, six point three, six, six and three-quarters acres.
It would be both.
Yeah. But the, the parking is on the west side of the entrance here, the parking spaces, and the wetland is over here. We, again, we see no, we see no impact to any of the natural resources on the site, aside from your paving and, like I said, Drain Commissioner. Aside from your paving, and like I said, Drain Commissioner will review the site plan.
He says six and three qu, that's greater than five.
Six and three quarter, it's greater than five.
It's also state-regulated.
That's, that's true.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions?
Did we hear from the applicant?
We have not yet. Is the applicant here? Would you like to come say anything more, the chair? Thank you, would you come to the podium, state your name and address, please?
Irina Jameson, I'm the Director of the Business Operations at Montessori Radmore School, 2745 Mount Hope in Okemos. So we are resurfacing, resurfacing the lot first of all, and then adding 12 spots. As the school grew over the last four or five years, especially with COVID influx, and nobody wants to leave unfortunately to go to public school. What we are experiencing is a sort of a tight space where we have staggered pickup and drop-off, where we make sure that we don't have all the parents arriving at once. But parents drop off or pick up, and they stay on the grounds to enjoy the grounds, to socialize with fellow parents, and they don't leave the parking spot for the next little parents to come in. But we end up with a congestion and, you know, sometimes having to pull up on the grass, and we don't want to do that. So that will alleviate that issue for us to have just a little bit of an overflow. We also would like to add sidewalks around the parking lot, we have a lot of young, young bodies walking through the parking lot. So we want to make sure that the safety is, is first and foremost in this project, where families, as they park, they have an immediate access to the parking, to the sidewalk space, that they could walk around the parking, parking area or through the middle as a designated crosswalk, so that we don't have any safety concerns. We have not had any accidents, but it's always something we worry about, especially when busy parents drop off and they zoom to work because they're late, you know, they have to get the child out the door. So that's sort of the scope of the project. Thank you.
Anybody have questions? Commissioner McCutcheon?
Yes, you said that, that this will help alleviate a lot of the congestion, when you say this, you're talking about the parking spaces? Will help alleviate?
Yeah, so the congestion has to do with parents, especially when the weather is nice, staying on campus after drop-off.
Right.
So because they don't leave our next group of parents that come in at the later pickup time, don't, you know, don't always have adequate enough spaces to park.
Oh, I see.
The additional spaces are, will be designated for the staff. We'll all park towards the Mount Hope and leave the, sort of that round area of the parking space open for parents.
I have a follow-up question, or a second question. Has there been an, an enrollment increase? I mean, I don't, I'm just asking if maybe that contributed to it.
Great question. So a couple of years ago, we were through, going through your process to amend the special use permit, we added an addition to our building and moved our elementary program into that building. So there was a incremental growth that happened with that. What we are also seeing is that the retention, pre-COVID was 70%. We naturally had about 70% retention from our younger ages into the elementary program, and the retention has not gone down from COVID, which was about 99%. The, these families are not leaving. So we, our classrooms are very full, which normally we don't like to have full capacity, just because it's a Montessori method, it's very child-oriented, but we have been at full capacity in our school. So there's that incremental increase with that as well, that plays into the decision.
And one last thing, and it may have been in the packet, I missed it, is, is it a K through eight?
It's a, it's a 18 months through sixth grade.
Eighteen, so, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, and now, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this public hearing? Okay. Thank you, I think we've heard what we need to, so this will be decided at the next meeting, but would you like to give staff a sense of the board, anyone like to comment on that?
I had a couple of comments.
Sure.
A bit of a mea culpa. Environmental Commission has been supporting expansion of some of the natural areas and other amenities on that campus, so we're a victim of our own success as well as their success in educating them. And then I was gonna offer a couple of really nerdy translations of planner speak.
Please.
There's a, a line in, in, mentioned in the staff report about no expansion of use. And it actually says no expansion of the use. Obviously, you're expanding the capacity of the parking, but when planners look at it, it's, the size of the building isn't changing at this point. It's something internal about what's going on there, so that it's not an expansion that would trigger a whole bunch of extra review. And I also had a question if we might learn tonight or a future meeting, if there's any consideration been given to other than traditional paving materials or other things like that. It can be really challenging in this part of the country, in this part of the state, to do something other than traditional paving of a parking lot, but, anything that can, I, I am certain that the Drain Commissioner's Office will ensure that the excess runoff that might be generated by the paving is somehow captured onsite and treated and dealt with. So I'm not concerned about that, it's just more an invitation, if there's a, something innovative being planned, great to hear about it.
Thank you.
We can look into that, sure.
Are, are there those alternative uses allowed through our building, like when you do site plan review? I know the city of Lansing had some municipal parking lots where they used some sort of permeable surface that kind of allowed for a little less runoff that just went away, but I know it's hard in a parking lot to.
It's not that they're not allowed, it's that there's different opinions on how well they work, especially as Commissioner McConnell alluded to in this part of the country. I saw pervious pavement used quite a lot in, when I was down in Kentucky, as a matter of fact, but the climate's different. They don't use as much salt, near as much salt, actually. So the, yeah, they could, they could use the pervious pavement, go in with vacuums and suck it up, suck up the debris, because that's what ends up happening, debris gets into the perviousness, and it, and it clogs, clogs it up, like a wet sponge, right? And it, and then it stops working. But we can, we can look into it.
Okay.
I can't promise it, but I can look into it.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any other questions, thoughts? Straw poll, those who would be supportive of this, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that's your direction, thank you very much. We'll close this public hearing at 7:03, 7:04, and then move on to our third and final public hearing, which is special use permit number 24009 for Sands, S-A-N-D-D-S, at 3520 Okemos Road.
Okay. Here we go. Just so, just to put a quick bow on that.
Okay.
The, the, the red, your, your, I'm sorry, your, your SUP application will be on the next Planning Commission agenda, which is June 10th, and they'll make a decision that night, so if you can put that on your calendar. I'm, I'm not kicking you out, I just,
You don't have to stick around if you don't want to, thank you.
Okay. This is SUP 24009 Sands Meridian LLC to establish an adult-use marijuana provisioning center in an existing commercial center located at 3520 Okemos Road. It was reported as being Suites 9 and 10 on the application, it is indeed Suites 8, 9, and 10, it is three suites. That does not affect the notification, the parcel is correct, and we did double-check that. This is an identical, identical application to a medical marijuana application that the applicant put through in 2019. When I say it's identical, the site plan's the same, the traffic study's the same, the security measures, et cetera, they're all the same, the difference is that this is an adult-use application and instead of a medicinal application. The Township Board did approve the permit for the adult-use marijuana facility on April 16th. And just a little bit of history, this property was divided from the remainder of the shopping complex in, on February 22nd of 2020. The commercial, the zoning is C2, so that's, and the district, the, the adult-use district is, is here. This is District 3 and the adult, adult, adult-use ordinance. It's going into an existing site, there's existing facilities. These are your, these are your SUP standards that I put up here for you to look at. Based on that, following comments. We don't really have a problem with the traffic, I understand, it's a 2019 traffic study, but they've got a large, they've got a large parking facility there, the traffic study showed there was plenty of parking then. And post-COVID, engineers that we've talked to, no one, like, we still haven't got to post-pre-COVID levels of service on our road system yet. I just heard that last week, last Friday at a meeting I was at, as a matter of fact, involving the City of Lansing. If, let's see, so that whole, that, so all this information is existing information that already, already is there. The required, there is a spacing consideration, this is, this is, does meet the minimum spacing from all the schools, daycares, libraries, childcare centers, et cetera. There is, Gilden Woods is located at 2190 Association Drive, that is 890 feet away from the, from the provisioning center. That falls under the 500-foot designation, or minimum distance, so that, that meets that. The, here's the process for this, they have to go through the SUP process. This case, you're going to make a recommendation on an application that will then go to the Township Board. This is one of those SUPs that needs that additional step. So they had a certain amount of time, they had 90 days to, I'm sorry, I'm not as well-versed in, in this. I kind of, this is a project I inherited a little bit. They had, they had 60 days to submit their application to the Planning Commission for their SUP, which they have done. They are going to, the SUP, the, the marijuana permit gets reviewed on an annual basis, the SUP does not, and won't come under review again unless they make a change. They do need to remain, to, to maintain the valid state license, which they do have, and they do need to remain in good standing with the township. Like I said, all of the, our previous attachments are there, the site plan is, is in here, I can show that to you. And here we go, this is the existing site. Back up one more a little bit here, Jolly Road is down here, these are vacant, that was the Berriamas Cleaner, that was an Asian restaurant. All three of these are gonna be combined into one, is my understanding, and that is the, that is the, the interior drawing. So anyway, I can answer questions, the applicant is here, and I don't have much else to say right now.
If the applicant is here, would you like to come speak to this project anymore? Thank you. Just say your name and address if you would.
Good evening, everyone. Jamie Garmo, 400 South Old Woodward Avenue in Birmingham. I don't think I've had the pleasure of presenting in front of the Planning Commission, so it's good to meet you all. I am legal counsel for Sands Meridian. We are a vertically operated cannabis company here in the state of Michigan. We've been working in Meridian Township since 2019 when the medical marijuana licensing ordinance was adopted. We were awarded a license and a special use permit on the exact location that we're applying for today for the adult use. It's been quite some time since then, there's been a couple of years in which the Township Board was drafting a licensing ordinance for adult use. And so we've been a bit delayed, but our facility itself is completely built out. We're just going through some interior design changes for some rebranding. So are slated to open once we are fully approved at the end of summertime. So the, the location in which the special use permit will be applicable, like I said before, would match exactly what was approved by the Planning Commission for the medical marijuana provisioning center license. So as Mr. Shorkey mentioned, this is a formality, from my understanding, under the licensing ordinance, that in order to receive full approval, we've received conditional approval from the Township Board, that the special use permit must be granted for the adult use licensing.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant or for staff? I have, what's probably a duh question for staff. So given the prior approval for the medical marijuana, if the applicant wanted to, they could open for that purpose right now and operate without, or did that not go through full Township approval?
We do have approval from the board for our medical marijuana license. We have the state approval as well, however, we are waiting for the adult use license to be fully granted so that we can open as a co-located facility.
Thank you.
It's not a duh question.
I know there's a lot of interplay there, and I just, I, I wanted to understand where, where that was in the process.
Yeah, no, it's been a point of contention, a lot of Township Board members initially wanted us to open exclusively as a medical marijuana provisioning center while they were still drafting the ordinance, but after COVID, I mean, the medical market is completely obsolete now, a lot of medical marijuana patients will receive discounts from adult-use retail facilities, so that the patient caregiver card or what have you, it's a technical term, becomes somewhat irrelevant. So it wasn't economically feasible for us to open up exclusively as a provisioning center, hence why we've waited.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott, did you have a question?
Yes, I was still waiting to hear the answer from Director Shorkey to your question.
I believe the applicant,
Can you take the mic, please, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. I believe that the applicant's interpretation is correct. They, they did have the medical marijuana license approval in place. COVID happened, but it is my understanding that they could proceed if they wanted to, but also as the applicant stated, that you don't see medical facilities opening anymore because adult use has made them obsolete.
So they can't proceed as, I heard you say they can't proceed as a medical marijuana?
I would have to confirm that, but that is my understanding, and I would certainly take, you know, an attorney's opinion.
So don't leave that. My, my next question was, do you remember the discussion that occurred among the previous Planning Commission that approved the medical marijuana?
I wasn't here, that was 2019, I did go back and look, that was, that was a unanimous decision.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner McCutcheon?
Yes, I just wanted to, just, I just want to be clear, the, so adult use is basically recreational?
Yes.
Okay, and in the facility, that's where you will, you know, sell marijuana-based products? Will, what about producing marijuana? That's not happening there?
No, there is no license to produce, and, and all of our retail stores, we have prepackaged products come in, so you'll see that some cannabis retailers will purchase bulk flour, so just imagine, you know, a big bag of marijuana flour, and they will package it in a back room there. We don't do that, everything comes prepackaged and labeled. And that's just to have for more clean operations and to reduce any smells or things of that nature. So no, it's exclusively retail, no production.
That's my next question, what would you do to, if you were to say, yes, we are producing, I figure you probably weren't, but. I figure you probably weren't, but still, what would you do to help reduce the smell? Only because there's a lot of restaurants and things around that area.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. No, it's a good question. We do have cultivation facilities elsewhere in more industrial areas in metro Detroit. So we have air filters and big HVAC machinery that basically filters the air and any smell so that it's not detectable outside of the actual interior of the facility parameters. But we will have air filters in the HVAC systems. We do have them installed right now at the facility in the plaza. So there should be little to no smell.
Thank you.
In the interior. And to go back on on the previous point with the medical marijuana approval, I'm happy to supplement this application with our, a copy of our approval, just so you have it on record and the commission can see it.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Okay, I think we're at public comment now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If anybody would like to
Before, before public comment, can I get some clarification, maybe from a staff viewpoint? There's so, there was so much work put into the specifics of the marijuana overlay districts. I'm trying to understand the purpose of what feels like an additional layer, the special use permit. I guess, what was the reasoning for putting that into the process when there's already so much on the, on the front end of this process?
I'm going to be really honest with you. I haven't, I wasn't involved personally with, with the creation of the standards. Director Schmidt controlled all of that. I'm not, I'm not saying badly or goodly, just saying, that was just the way, that's the way it was. So I can't speak to the reasoning for the creation of this process. I only know that it was, and it's my job to get this through that process.
So each municipality has a different process, and the special use permit may or may not be part of it, per se?
Yeah.
Roughly speaking.
Again, I'm not, I'm not an expert on Michigan adult use marijuana law, but it is my understanding that this, yeah, yeah, okay, so I guess I can say that pretty authoritatively. Each municipality is allowed to create its own approval process. Ours might not, ours doesn't look the same as East Lansing. It doesn't look the same as Bath's, et cetera. This is our process, and how we got here, I would have to do a lot of research to answer that question.
Thanks.
Sure. And here, I'll move this back up so that there's a little bit of basis of conversation upcoming.
Thank you. Commissioner Skiles, you have a question for?
Well, I was starting. As I recall, the discussions that were ongoing, the purpose of the overlay districts were to identify the only areas where we would accept the industry. It was originally trying to be confined into our, our industrial areas and a few places outside, but it was established in looking at the school districts, looking at the other industries or occupations that were within the area. And they did a very good job, I want, I want to say. The board did that under the direction of, of, at that time, Trusty Opsmer. The special use permit is just part of our normal process for what they want to do, for the business that they're trying to bring to the area.
Right. Just, I guess the point is, we don't, we don't approve every single business entity that comes into the township, though. Like, there's a special use permit for certain entities. So given, like, what you just said, how thoroughly the whole overlay district was thoughtfully designed and determined, I just wondered, this feels like an additional layer to me.
And I, I think going back, and this is kind of trying to remember what happened several years ago, I, I think there, it's sort of a twofold process because, as Commissioner Skiles says, these are the areas where it could exist and not anywhere else. But even then, the way they're zoned, this is a use that isn't a given in that zoning or that area. You'd have to look at the property within that area to say, does this property, does this use fit this property in this site in this location? So that would be, I think, it's just an extra step. And, and when we talked about this ordinance, I think we were asked for our thoughts, the planning commission, on whether we wanted this to be a SUP that we signed off on or whether we recommend, and we recommended to the township board that it be one that they do because it is a pretty significant decision. And so while we wanted to be part of the process, we wanted that extra step of township board also putting its seal of approval, and that is how I recall those conversations. Commissioner Brooks?
Do I understand correctly that there are four districts, and this is the third application of those?
There are five. There are five adult use districts.
There were six.
There used to be six.
And just confirming, this
When all shook out. This is District Three of the adult use.
This is in a district, and it's already been approved by the board.
The, the permit has been approved and it
Permit has been approved by the board.
Thank you, everybody. Anyone else have thoughts, or can we open your public?
We can have more conversation after public comment as well.
If there's anybody here who's speaking to this specific public hearing, please come up and give your name and address when you, before you speak, and you only have three minutes to talk.
Now? Are these, oh, yeah, okay, yeah, I can handle that.
Hi, I'm Dr. David Possitt. I'm a, I'm a resident at three seven one two Autumn Wood Lane, and I've been a resident for thirty years in, in Oakwood. And I can't be more blessed to have, I have raised my children here. It's a, it's a environment that is kind, caring, loving. It's very family oriented. It, it's very education oriented, and through the years, when they first did the medical use permit, that seemed reasonable. I think there's a place for it, but adult use is a completely different use. Since they did that too, the research has changed, and more and more is coming about how basically this high levels of THC is a poison to the brain. There's a lot of neurotoxicity to the use of this. I think the decision to put an adult use right next to Big B's, where kids are coming in and out constantly, not only is it, you're talking the flow in that area where the high school's there, the middle school's there, an eighteen-year-old boy could pick some up, he could go to his sixteen-year-old son or brother, and, you know, they could take it on to the schools. This stuff is very portable. It's very potent. It's very neurotoxic. It's fat soluble, meaning that it's, it sits in the brain for long periods of time. There's a lot of research showing that a chronic use causes dementia. This is a huge decision by the commission and the board. It's a totally different beast than when you're talking medical use. Somebody dying of cancer, certainly THC has its place, but we're talking recreational use that has a very neurotoxic effect on the brain. Now, the research over the last couple of years has exploded in this area. You gotta dig for it. It's hard to find, but it's out there. And so the decision you make is monumental on our children's health. The amount of effect on their brains, we don't even know how it's going to affect their memory and their IQs. We know it affects the IQs of these children. This is a huge decision you're making. And it's, remember that flow, that's where Big B's is, and all the kids are running it out. And if you, if the board or everyone makes the decision to do this, you're actually kind of sending a message to the kids that this stuff is no big deal by, by, by allowing this to happen. I, I can't tell you how blessed I am to have raised my children here. It's a beautiful community, but this is a monumental decision for all of you. And that's, that's all I really have to say. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, just one other thing, I'm sorry. Actually, the American Heart Association stroke, I found this, which is very, very prestigious. Two thousand and twenty-two.
Just so you know, your time is running out.
Okay, just if you would go and look at that, it would be wonderful, because I think if you look at this, it's not just me talking, more and more physicians are finding this.
Can you spell your last name, please?
P A W S A T.
P A W S A T.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I think so, yes. Seeing no other public comments, I think we will close the public hearing at seven twenty-five, but then if there is additional board member discussion before we do a straw poll.
I just wanted to clarify, the age of use in Michigan is twenty-one.
Thank you. I thought it was. I was trying to find that, and it wasn't as quick as you were, but I thought I had heard that.
So
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I, I'm going to assume, with that said, Commissioner, they're going to ID and all of that. What's the process? I'm assuming that's what, that's what would take place.
It's my understanding that's required.
They could speak to the pro, their internal, can you speak to your internal process?
What would be the process for determining the legal age?
Yeah. They scan your ID.
Thank you again for the opportunity. So every part of the operations is regulated by the Cannabis Regulatory Agency, the State of Michigan, and they have very, very strict parameters as to our client intake, and it requires ID verification that not just by viewing, but also by scanning to ensure that the ID is valid. And we are required to maintain records of that data to ensure that it's constantly updated. So when we have inspections, which happen every quarter, that we have to provide that to the CRA inspector to ensure that we have all of our clients meeting that twenty-one age minimum verification.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, that's good. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions, comments? Okay, I guess I'll entertain a straw poll. If you are inclined to support this special use, recommending support, approval of this special use permit, you say aye.
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 Thank you. That was good. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, annie-nay's. Are you hearing that? Thank you, if that helps you, Mr. Shorkey.
It does.
Okay. Moving on to item eight, unfinished business. I don't believe we have any. Item nine, other business. It doesn't look like we have any of that either, unless you would like to talk more under other business about minutes or, oh, you have something?
No, I just like this conversation.
Okay.
Same, same thing I said to them June tenth. This will be back up here for their vote, and then it'll proceed to the township board for their approval as well. So I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course. And again, I'm not kicking you out if you're into the minute conversation.
You're welcome to stay as long as you'd like. Thank you. Okay, so we're on, unless we have other business, if anyone would like to discuss, we'll go to item ten, reports and announcements. Oh, do you want to talk more about the minutes?
I thought you brought it up.
Yeah. I, I would, I would do this at work, too, and I, I'm always inclined to do less is more in minutes just because it is so easy. So my personal preference is less is more. You're required, I don't know, like, they're required to talk about who was there, when the meeting started, when it ended, and any votes taken.
Right. So in this case, it was a public hearing. You had someone get up and speak, and I did make sure I got his name right. That, that's a minute thing. There, I, I guess what we'd like to know, if you're talking about this, what's the balance between conversation ensued and how much and the level of detail that you want, you know, from the scale of, we're not doing dictation to, everything could be just summarized as the public hearing was open, the planning commission discussed it and asked questions, and then open floor, and there was a comment. You see what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, there's a level of too, maybe too broad, but I, you know, we're happy to talk about it.
So I'm curious to hear thoughts of others.
I've generally been pretty satisfied with the depth of the minutes, how they're, you know, reported back. I would agree that if, if there's a lot of additional detail, it could get dicey. Plus, the videos exist for the purpose, in my opinion, of going back and getting a lot, getting to a lot of the more detailed information. I mean, it's all there if you, if you want to dig that deep. So I, I just
That's true.
I feel pretty good about what we have been receiving.
Okay.
Myself.
Because, remember, it's a two-step process. The clerk's office is doing it and then sends it to us, and then we review it. So when, for a brief period, we were writing them, and I'll just tell you, my philosophy was I did try to get what your thoughts were. I figure you're taking the time to be here, you know, but every once in a while, you guys would go down a rabbit hole. No, I mean, I mean
We like kids.
Turn into
That seemed direct.
I, no, it is difficult to try to, and the point that somebody made earlier, where you're like, that might have been what he said, but that isn't true. I think sometimes when people talk, just like I did, you sort of stop your sentence midway through and you gesture, and that's hard to pick up in, in written word.
This is true.
And I think sometimes the meaning gets lost, or when, when there's an attempt to abbreviate and summarize.
Okay.
It, it's very difficult to do that for somebody who's listening or watching and and really get to the meaning. And, and that's the one thing, I, I think my change to the minutes last month was a very subtle, that might have been what I said, but that wasn't what I meant. And so I think that's a really hard
Yeah.
way to go back, and it puts some pressure on staff to try to infer. And that's my one concern, but yeah, but I do like having the detail sometimes because it refreshes your memory as you're going back, particularly like tonight when we've done a public hearing, and then next meeting, we're looking to approve it without having to skim through, although the meeting recordings are pretty helpful because there is a list of what time each item starts, so that's really helpful.
Yeah.
But, but I think finding some level of balance, and I think in general, it's been pretty good in my mind, but I think sometimes we may, so I want to get to what Commissioner Brooks brought up of, is there benefit for somebody who might be reading the minutes to have a little bit more detail, and if so, kind of what would you be looking for? Anybody have thoughts or?
Well, the reason I said it is because in that specific meeting, we were asking, we were being asked for feedback, and I listened to the entire board meeting, which this topic was also present last time, and I was just thinking about the overlap in those comments from both groups and whether or not they should be captured in some way, especially if something like a, someone like a developer or, or any group that's looking for our feedback like that, if it needs to be captured in a public format. That's what I was curious about. But I would also ask a follow-up question to that is, are, is there a difference between the notes, the, the meeting notes that we all vote on and the recording from a legality perspective would be another question? Because like, if we write it down, does it become more legally binding than the audible version?
The comments are not legally binding, and it's the vote that's legally binding. The comments are simply information behind the vote.
Okay.
Like processing in real time.
Commissioner McCallum?
I would suggest that there's a further level of distillation that occurs. So when we have a discussion, we get minutes that are somewhat detailed. That then gets distilled by staff to a memo that's presented to the board, which our discussion goes from however many pages down to, like, a paragraph or two if it was contentious. So I know many board members do tune into these meetings and sometimes go back and review them so they have access to that record, but it could be a really good sign of the topics that we talked about then got picked up by the board because they were in the staff summary, and they wanted to dig into them. But if it's just repetition, then what's that serving?
You know, you make a really good point because I do not, I, I'm embarrassed a little bit to say, I do not read every township board packet verbatim to look for, and I, you know, that, that's a good reminder because the verbatim to look for, and I, you know, that, that's a good reminder because the times that I have, I was sort of like, there was one where I caught my name spelled wrong, and it was, you know, but like, I had never seen this. How on earth did this get there? But I, I think that, I, because I, after our conversation, and then when I saw the public notice for the township boards, not hearing, but conversation with the developer, and it said, you know, the planning commission and the economic development, development commission have already had a chance to provide input. I wondered if we perhaps missed an opportunity at our last discussion to kind of, I don't know that we had consensus of the, the planning commission, but to put some sort of statement down that we collectively wanted to give that feedback so that that could perhaps be conveyed more formally to the township board, because I think otherwise, no action of the, of the planning commission is an action of the planning commission unless we vote on it, and we all, you know, it gets a majority vote.
Well, you were specifically, it was not an action item.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we weren't expecting you to take action.
Okay, but I didn't know if we should have put a statement down, like, we feel this way or not. Otherwise, it was just seven collective opinions on something as opposed to the planning commission as a body having an opinion on.
That's, yeah, that's, that's a, that's more semantic, but that's a good point, I think. You're right. There, there was, we weren't looking for a motion, but a final, I don't want to say definitive, but kind of a final wrap-up. What, you know, because we did have to summarize everything and for the board.
Commissioner Scales?
I think the board got the message. I attended that board.
Okay, I wasn't able to, so I haven't watched it yet.
And I concluded, this is in my opinion, that we were just the test run of what they were going to present to the board. Because I know the part about the containment of the chemicals really touched me. I didn't hear any mention of that at the board meeting, so I think they, they, they practiced on us and realized what they need to emphasize and what they don't need to emphasize with the board. But I, I think, uh, while I know the board is just not going to accept either one of those, uh, proposals, I mean, they made it very clear that they're extremely disappointed, and as I call it, a shell game. Show us one thing, and then deliver us something else. So I don't know where this is going to land. Do you have any idea where this might land next?
We're not at that yet. That's at the township board update. You can ask.
They also were not asked for a, a motion. They were given this, uh, you know, the same idea, concept, plan, discussion. I, I can, I can confidently say that we haven't, we haven't had any indication that they're going to move forward.
Right.
Okay.
That's a nice way of putting it.
Thank you. Commissioner Blummer?
I, I think the discussion we're having is more important on a general base rather than this particular topic, because it could come up again. But I was going to discuss this when I talked, when you asked for comments about, um, liaisons, because I attended, um, right after our meeting, the next day, I attended a meeting of the DDA as liaison, and they were absolutely incensed at the proposal. Now, they weren't required to vote on it either, but what they did was they voted to send a letter of their consensus to the township board.
That's interesting.
And, and they were, they worked over the, the wording of the letter, several variations on it. And ultimately, they, they agreed on what the letter should say, and they sent that to the board to indicate the consensus without a formal vote. And I, I thought that was an excellent process if we run into that situation again. It expresses our collective opinion on it without actually going to a formal vote on something that isn't before us for a vote.
I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you. So that's something to consider on things like this going forward. I don't know if it's a moot point for this issue at this point, given that the township board has already had a meeting and, and done, but if, you know, we think there's merit in something going forward at some point, perhaps that's something we could talk about.
And Amber Clark wrote one hell of a letter.
Oh, she did. Beautifully put together.
Doesn't take too many words to describe it.
Oh, she did a good job. So, but I just thought on a general basis, that would be an approach that we could consider.
Yeah. I, I, I like that because I feel like we made a lot of good points. I don't think they were fully captured in the notes, but I'm not sure they needed to be, but I, I'm happy to hear that, um, that the township board seemed to have shared some of those opinions too. Great. Any other thoughts, correction for staff on minutes? Okay, now we're at item ten, reports and announcements, township board update.
I don't have anything specific for you right now. In the future, my understanding is that I'll probably be bringing more, more stuff to you.
Okay.
So I apologize for that now, but that's not going to be the same in the future.
Great. Thank you. And then liaison reports.
Okay.
Please go ahead.
As I said, I, I attended the DDA the next day after our meeting. They were madder about the proposal than we were, and they were furious. And it was basically, the, the burden of the chair of that meeting was to keep everybody's heads from exploding. They were, they just were furious at the whole proposal. And there was the township treasurer and one, possibly two township board members attended the DDA meeting just so they have, they could have a preview of what was going to be coming before the board. So there was never any question that the, that the board was going to come to an alternate opinion based on my presentation to the DDA, which was heard by the board members, and then, and, and I wasn't thrilled with that proposal, so I made it clear about that. Uh, and then the, uh, position of the DDA council itself, uh, made it quite clear that, that no one was happy with that proposal.
Thank you. Any other liaison? Commissioner McConnell?
The environmental commission met on May first, and, um, the main order of business was to review a set of applications for the climate sustainability plan funding, uh, seated by the board, uh, thirty thousand dollars this time around. A lot of, uh, interest, a lot of, um, great proposals, um, from some of the food composting and food gleaning initiatives, signage at the recycling center, continuing what in education. A couple of items that, uh, were under consideration that are in the master plan as something that should be explored, such as green burial and, um, the green space plan update, were not recommended to go forward at this time. The green space plan update, initial estimate from the firm that did the two thousand four green space plan, uh, came in at close to what our entire annual budget would be, and so, uh, we're going to, uh, fall back and think about what a green space plan update should look like and how much, uh, should be invested in it. So that one is, is on a back burner, uh, and the other was the green burial, which they were hoping to explore the use of a particular plot in a particular cemetery and get some design consultants to come out and sketch out what it would look like, and there was concern that a little bit more outreach and engagement needs to happen before you start hiring consultants to draw up, uh, this is what it will look like, because it can be a touchy subject.
Also, if I may, um, on behalf of the environmental commission, I did support, um, a proposal from a faculty member at MSU to Congressman Slotkin's office, and I'm not fully understand how that funding mechanism works, but has to do with, um, supporting research on anaerobic digestion, because they already have a program going on, but it's more of a local, kind of, let's see what we can do. They do a lot of projects all over the world. But what can we do here in, in, uh, the MSU area to try to implement this kind of technology?
Thank you. Any other reports? We are down to number eleven, project updates. That was in the packet. Anything else to add?
Under construction, Planet Fitness. Uh, that's all interiors. There's no site plan involved or anything like that. And at the end, new applications, uh, Consumers Energy is supposed to be coming before you in June with a public hearing to, there's an existing transfer station. Uh, they want to do an, an update, an improvement, an enlargement, and they have purchased the property on the northeast corner of Rutherford and, and Lake Lansing, and I'm waiting for final documents to come in by five o'clock tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Also, uh, it's not a project specific, but just to remind you, June tenth is the public hearing on your recommended changes to the RN district ordinance as well.
Great, thank you. And, and we're back down to public remarks. Anybody like to speak? Come to the podium, give us your name and address. Thank you.
Anne Perkins, five nine seven two Village Drive in Hasslet. I'm on a board too, and I know it's hard to remember, but when you guys are talking and you start to mumble, I can't hear you.
Oh.
So. Thank you.
It, it is hard to remember that when you're up here. But thank you for making that, making that point to us. We'll try to be better. All right. That ends public comment. We're on number thirteen, or numbers, yeah, number thirteen. No, I can't see. Commissioner comments. Anybody else have anything to say? I need my glasses. Commissioner Scales?
Yes. I attended the Michigan Association of Planners' Spring Resilience Summit, uh, this past week, and it was excellently presented by, uh, planners from all over the state. The resilience issues that they discuss, a lot of them dealt with when you're making your plans, how to plan, understanding the change of climate that we now live in. There was some discussion from a gentleman up in Marquette, and I remember in two thousand and three, March of two thousand and three, a dam burst up in Marquette, and eight billion, that's B as in boy, eight billion gallons of water came rushing down state, down through, uh, Marquette. And they have now, I asked about that, and that was a part of his talk, but he was talking about how they have, uh, utilized their, their planning and their hazardous, hazardous mitigation planning to, uh, avoid dealing with, uh, dam burst and having to recover from things like that. But I asked him about that incident, and what did they learn from that? And how have they, they worked to mitigate situations like that? And he said that they don't do a hundred-year planning, they do a five-hundred-year planning.
Wow.
I just found that really hard to conceptualize. How do you do that?
Wow, I, yeah, I don't know.
But there, there are, there are a ton of great speakers, including this one young man who was from the city of Vassar, and he spoke about all of the issues in his little town, but what I liked about him the most was, when I taught at Saginaw Valley State University, state and local government, he was my student. And so I was just amazed that the student was teaching the teacher.
That's the best. Thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share?
I've looked into those sessions, and I'm, I was so frustrated this year because it seemed like everything they offered was mostly in March. And I was so busy in March, so I don't, if there's ever opportunities to attend those types of planning conferences outside of like, March, I would be interested.
Keep your breasts.
And I know you've shared that, and we get some of their, I, I've gotten emails, I think, and, and mailings to talk about that, but I do think it, I have not, just with my own work schedule and personal schedule, been able to take advantage of it. I look at it and say, this looks like loads of fun, and, and it's really interesting, that kind of thing, and, and just basic, you know, how to, how to do your job better and how to understand sort of the interplay between some of these issues, that if you could sort of highlight things that you think might be helpful to us as, as commissioner, you know, like, if you can only do one, do this, or if there, you know, I sometimes, I see that there's registration fees. I don't know if the township does support that or if we'd have to go on our own dime, but if there's a budget for any of that.
We have a, we have a training budget.
Okay.
Um, I just want to make sure that I have enough to go to the conference.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. It's more important that you get trained than us, because you do all the hard work, but, but I, I think it would be helpful for all of us, I think, to take advantage of that if and when we can, um, provided that the opportunity is there. So, thank you. Thank you for raising it, flagging it. Commissioner McConnell?
Um, Thursday and Friday at the Lansing Center is the My Healthy Climate Conference. And I know, uh, at least a handful of folks are using, um, discounted or free registration earned by the township for its, uh, green stewardship activities. And there may still be one or two of those registrations available. And Roy Harvey is kind of managing that process, so if you, nothing better to do on Thursday and Friday, go find out what Michigan Climate Forward Plan looks like and how it's going to impact, uh, communities like Meridian.
Are you attending?
I am.
Are you? So can you, if, if we aren't able to go, will you share?
I'll bring back all the month.
Thank you. I, I just want a stress ball. I'm sure they're going to go this way. I want a pen and a stress ball.
I also had a question for, uh, uh, staff about a comment about levels of service in, uh, intersections since COVID that we have not yet returned to those. We don't need to talk about it tonight. Just caught my attention, so it's, seems like something worth. Uh, as we continue to talk about the value of traffic studies in our applications, I think when you go from a hundred-year flood planning to five-hundred-year, you just say, well, that's what we used to think four, a hundred years would look like. It's going to be five times worse. I think that's, and.
Exactly.
So in terms of how we, uh, manage traffic going forward, that's, um, interesting to keep track of them. Trends.
Well, something to think about if you have time to share that more in more detail at a future meeting.
Well, it's not a lot of, I mean, if you want something specific, you know, a report or something, that's one thing, but, um, I mean, just in, it was just a general comment. Uh, Friday, I was at the Minmiak Land Use Lunch, and the discussion there was the Michigan Corridor Project in Lansing and the public input processor, you know, the problems and challenges of that project, and Andy Kilpatrick from, the engineer for the city of Lansing was there. And he pointed out that one of the, one of the problems with, one of the things with that, with the Michigan prop, so just to, just to clarify, the proposal from the city of Lansing was to remove the boulevard and put in five lanes of road, because the traffic that they were assuming was going to happen was based on a future projection from pre-COVID numbers. When they looked at traffic as it is now, it is less, and that was just the latest example of a traffic engineer saying that in a conference or educational setting. I don't have a data to support that. I'm just hearing that over the last couple of years from traffic engineers.
Thanks.
It doesn't mean we won't get back there, but people are still kind of working from home.
You say there are a lot of people who are probably going to be high-grader, working from home forever, so, or at least for the foreseeable future. Thank you. Is that satisfy?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
I can.
It's more a reminder of us to, for us to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Great. There's nothing else? Oh, no, it's good.
Tomorrow, Tuesday, at one fifteen, the board is having a meeting at the, uh, Senior Center where they will be making a presentation, uh, the task force will be making a presentation on the Senior Center and Community Center. I heard the, uh, presentation at the board meeting, but I think this one will be more in-depth, and it'll be directed to the seniors, which I think is a good idea.
Great, thank you for sharing that.
At the Senior Center, uh, by Chippewa.
At, yes.
At one fifteen, you said?
At one fifteen.
I'm assuming that one's not televised or recorded.
I think that's a fair assumption, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, are you attending?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm a senior. I know it's hard to believe.
I'm an AARP member myself, so. All right, nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, is okay, meeting is adjourned at 7:55. Thank you, everybody.
Is this my second?